Okay.
Kathy, is that I, I press it.
The red one.
I did. They don't press it right now.
You don't.
I don't break it.
Don't worry.
Now, is it up? Is it up, Nate? I'll call the meeting order at six oh three. And I guess this is to go with the one articles in the budget committee. I guess the first thing to do is go to the budget committee.
I don't have to check this, but I don't know what, what's the order.
It was posted as the budget committee and number one articles.
Alright, so we, uh, we're open. Yeah, just going to clarify, Mr. President, committee meeting. Six four. Okay.
Oh. Oh, we're here.
There's a right here.
The wall?
Doesn't hear.
There's fire here.
Yeah, it's fine.
So, uh, did you have a time for public hearing too often? Yes, of course. Alright, so we're in a public hearing on the ledger. Public comment. Is Charlie answering?
No. Nobody is.
Just ask about the highlights of the budget. Do you think your line items are fiscal concerns we might be discussing? I understand a lot of them, it's just.
Does anyone want to answer that? Could each highlight. Given?
Yeah, there's a question.
Fiscal concern and highlights on the budget as we went through. You have me. I always wonder if we had me.
I always have someone, I can think of who's asking. I've never opened the old edition of the computer.
So there's this grant. That's going to pay for a portion of the cost of that or ten for full time. So he gets that, so we, we spent a lot of time digging into a little further follows for what costs they were. But it's not very round. So, um, as a result of adding staff, by default, we're going to have to increase for, there's a theory that overtime is going to be impacted because one of the conditions of the grant is, is to maintain good standing, you can have to have four people on the crew at all times. So if somebody calls out, you can't just run with three. So if you think of that involved in keeping a three-person crew with overtime and holidays and sick people, now you amplify that, so that's a cost that.
Is it important?
We don't know what the impact truly will be, but in order to maintain good standing to maintain.
It sounds like that.
Half, half of it. So. That's a, that's a letter. So that was, that was a big one to me as well.
Happened.
And, and what was the, the resolution?
Charlie's what's there?
Sam's.
Um, she kind of forecasted a number, um, and tried to come from pulling it down. So the number that's in there represents some compromise, but it really, you know, as you recall, the, the true number of overtime exposure is much greater than the number we have a budget. Based on, everybody took all time off, it was coming to them, and I thought you felt it was a time limit. That number's enough to drive a number. Fortunately, that isn't reality, so that achieved four million, they can average over the last few years.
So liability was always.
The liability and the internal exposure is always huge, so I would say based on, but you can take, going backwards, taking an average backwards is based on a three-person team. You know? So how do you roll that out for something you've never done before? How big is your moment? It's covering a full person. So that was, that was something we didn't, you know, normally see. We didn't see at, at the exposure of the grant, okay, yeah, there's turnout here, yeah, there's, there's things that the district will have to bear that the grant doesn't always cover. I think one of the other things that I learned was the health benefits. The grant will pay an average between the single and, the single plus one, single plan. So the grant pays an average number. So all four do either, they're all on the favor plan, and the district will pay the, if they're all on the single person, then we make out a figure that's always covered. A lot, there's a lot of questions about what, what are the true costs that takes the free money? And there are some prices.
Thank you.
We also had some issues with, uh, the amount of money that was being requested for the Alphacan system. We just walked warrants, the traffic, when people, when there's a fire or a police. And, um, in the past, I guess for the past few years, the state has been requiring us to pay for everything. So because of that, the chief had inserted a, a large figure on that line. And, um, we suggested that we call our state senator and see if anything could be done. And the bottom line, that was that the state came out, they did all the repair, they furnished all the parts, so we were able to remove that line on the budget.
And quote, it's down to six thousand, it was a six thousand dollar conversation that the district would have to pay very little. And the town of Tilton was going to provide police detail. It ended up, through various negotiations, it ended up being six hundred dollars in parts that the state came out to buy parts to get the lake. So it went from six grand to six hundred.
And I think they did provide some parts, if they know.
They, they did provide them.
Yeah, part, we're a serious customer, and we still provide.
Do that's a, a one-time benefit, or is that something you can, yes?
Well, I would think it was something we can negotiate a year in a year, I would think.
If, if they don't break, it won't be any.
Oh, all these intersections are on state roads. The four, I mean, I think it was four major intersections that were a big deal. They're state roads, they're state traffic lights, they're state signals, so it really should have been the folks down in Spink Bear, um, on all those things to deal with it. So I think they're trying to release some of that stuff to the town. Kind of, kind of bought that.
Good, thank you.
Is there any numbers there? Just Charlie, just Charlie.
There's another, another thing we have, about a bathroom in this building. We were on, we were on the committee last week, we raised an appropriate to add a shower, heat contamination. At some point in the year, the budget seemed strange that the leadership made a decision not to spend that money on the bathroom. So they had, there is a reason appropriate, again, we built the bathroom, but now it is significantly more expensive than it was previous year because not just putting in a shower, it's putting in an ADA, which is a little weird, so. If you saw for money for a shower this year, it's the same budget we tried to accomplish previous year, like Trump started breaking and, um, they took the breaks on that, said, okay, we're going to keep that money. It did end up, the year ended up okay, but maybe this, oh, um, so we're going to build the bathroom, yeah.
I'm, I'm curious, what questions that would not be addressed tonight, that will be addressed at the district meeting, and why, why they can't be discussed tonight? Or, or, I don't, I don't plan on, I mean, whether negotiation or anything like that, but I'd just like to know what is not going to be discussed tonight, or will be at the meeting.
One of the things we did do was we removed the cost of the fight contract with fire hydrants, against pressurized fire hydrants. You will not see that in the budget. It was proposed in the budget. We decided, as a budget committee, not to fund it at all. Uh, we had quite a discussion about that. You will see, and I'm sure it will be, quite a heated discussion at the district meeting. What happened was when we removed this, the commissioner put it in as a warrant article. So I'm sure that caused a lot of controversy. Because in the budget committee, we discussed the fact that it might be time for us to think about mine, attack ourselves. Um, and if, if we looked at all we spent over the years and paid to the water company, we would have saved a great deal of money had we considered doing that in the past, but maybe time was considered.
Thank you. Isn't that the only? The only issue that would be discussed?
Those are the highlights of the office discussion, but who knows what people will bring up from the audience at the district meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. Well, let's, uh, let's keep it open.
No participant is now joining.
It's Charlie.
It's Charlie now.
I'll be it.
Hi, Charlie.
Hey, Charlie, let's keep our, uh, the hearing open until six thirty, in case somebody comes in on the Zoom, but that doesn't prevent us from doing your homework.
I'm already good.
Come on. I'm not.
Can you tell me where it's at? Serious question.
Charlie, the child, we're looking at.
He can run so far.
No, you can open your phone.
You can shut that off beside it, can you?
Yes.
I feel bad. Everybody's feeling it.
Is that the spares of the updated one? Is that the spares of the updated one? But I have one right here in the end of the page.
So you, I should shut it off?
Yes, you can stop it and then start it again. The video is just going to keep going, but that's okay.
All set? Should I start it again?
Yes.
Okay, I guess the next step is, uh, we'll go through the one articles.
I can read this one. I'm sorry, what? So, Article one, to choose fire, uh, choose fire commissioner. To choose a fire commissioner for the ensuing three years, actual voting to be by official ballot on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, at the annual town meeting, the annual town voting sessions in Tilton and Northfield, at their respective polling places and times. So, okay. Article two, choose treasurer. Choose a moderator.
Oops. Good.
Alright. So that moderator is treasurer, or can choose a treasurer as moderator?
It should be treasurer.
Okay, so in the line, will be an adjustment to choose a treasurer for the ensuing ensuing two years, actual voting to be by official ballot on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, at the annual town voting sessions in Tilton and Northfield, at their respective polling places and times. Any other concerns with that one? Article three, choose clerk. To choose a clerk for the ensuing two years, actual voting by official ballot on Tuesday, March ninth, twenty twenty-one, at the annual town voting sessions in Tilton and Northfield, at their respective polling places and times. Article four, accept reports of treasurer and commissioners. To accept the reports of the treasurer and the fire commissioner and pass any voting relating to, thereto. Article five, add to land and building fund. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars to be added to the land and building capital reserve fund previously established. This article is recommended by the board of commissioners. And budget committee, majority vote required.
But this is two years.
Is there another?
The clerk and treasurer on three years. I was sitting there, I'm like, I hope I did the ballots right.
So to choose a, on Article two, you're saying to choose a treasurer for the ensuing
Three years.
Three years.
And same with the clerk on Article five.
And then in Article three, to choose a clerk for the ensuing three years as well.
Don't check your ballots before I.
Thank you.
That's why it says treasurer.
That's right.
Alright. Um, was there any, anything on the Article five, on any building fund?
Is that?
Isn't that supposed to allow the cap?
I suppose, I mean, designated fund balance.
Yeah.
Alright.
I take all the bump.
So instead of, um.
Alright, so it will.
You guys discussed this, right?
Yes, they did. It'll say with, with funds to come from the outside fund balance.
Yes, that's what we had in our, in our line on this one.
It'll be fixed.
Okay, so, but for the reading purposes, is it going to be like what we've had on this one? Alright, so the one that we went over, I'll read that one as well. And that's for the Article five, which it is. And it says to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars, be added to the land and building capital reserve fund previously established, with said funds to be withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance. This article is recommended by the board of commissioners, and we didn't at the time have budget committee on, so that's how it was written, we'll go through that.
I'm more likely to agree with that, right?
Yeah. No, you agreed to the other one, I don't, I'm sorry.
So Article five will be adjusted on the draft, or is it going to match?
It matches the wording on Article six.
Alright. So Article six needs to be rewritten, or should I go off the draft?
No, Article six should be okay.
Okay, we'll go through Article six on the draft.
I, I got a question on that, because raise and appropriate generally means.
Taxation.
Taxation. And normally what we say is to see if the district will add the sum of, just add the sum to fund, the funds to be withdrawn from the inside fund balance. So to me, raise and appropriate takes you down the road of taxation.
It doesn't always, you can raise an appropriate one all the way.
Okay.
You have to say, actually, it's how you can raise an appropriate.
That is correct.
You have to be specific.
Yeah. You have, yeah, you raise it appropriate and then you pull it out of, be honest.
I've had it brought to me that way before, that's, oh no, raise and appropriate is taxing, it's going to, to see if the district will add.
Yeah, which might cause less controversy at the district meeting.
Um, do you some ways to, to have the revenue?
They've already, yeah, they've already looked at them.
I mean, you could add, what we did was, um.
Do you have a, did this one approve that as a present?
They looked at it, they approved the wording, but they, it's not finalized until after the hearing and changes are made.
They didn't pick up on any of the mistakes in this document?
They don't know where yours goes.
No, they don't. They don't catch that.
I think they were thinking of three versus two years.
You think, they know, or, they look at officials.
They don't.
They have like three hundred pounds of.
I'm so glad we had them.
Yeah, we do a low.
So what do you do? You were saying.
Uh, so we, um, put at the end of it, um, uh, this article will not.
Does not affect the tax rate?
Does not affect.
Kind of like what you.
Will not affect the tax rate.
Right, this says funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate.
Okay, so you could add that to that.
That's, that, yeah, it'll read the same way as Article six.
Yeah, I could send it in number seven. Fund appropriated from this fund do not affect.
Yeah, we could even get it by September.
Alright, I have more. They said it's number six.
Right, so number five will read the same way as number six and number seven. And number eight.
Okay, so.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I was reading, I just want to make sure. So you're going to reword these to match with the budget committee voted to recommend?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
As long as you do that.
It will be absolutely that way. I promise.
We get the same thing as you.
And just so long as, otherwise, we will have to readdress that.
Right, it will be correct.
It'll be what we voted on.
Yes.
Where it will bring it to our attention.
Yes, it will, it will be on the side fund balance, will be added to Article five.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Article six, design, engineering, and architectural fees. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of designing, engineering, and architectural fees associated with construction, addition, and/or renovation of a fire station or fire stations. This special warrant article will be non-lapsing appropriation for RSA thirty-two, colon, seven, comma, seven, and will not lapse until the buildings, building or buildings is completed.
Number six.
Number six.
Oops, room number six, I'm sorry. Okay, until buildings are completed. The sum to come from the unassigned fund balance, funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. The article is recommended by the board of commissioners and the budget committee.
At what point do you have an undesigned fund balance?
Well, we, we have one now, but we'll know what the actual amount is after the audit, the audit will come in this week. So after the audit, we'll definitely know what the exact amount is.
So this would be a previous year's undesigned fund balance?
We know that, yeah.
It wouldn't be, it's not, it's not twenty twenty-one undesigned fund balance, because if it is.
It'll be, it'll be the undesigned fund balance from twenty twenty. We know what the twenty nineteen was, but we don't know what the twenty twenty is until after the audit will come in. We'll have that number for this committee.
Hopefully.
It'd be more, hopefully, before that.
Hopefully.
No fifty tens during comedy.
Yeah, that's all the, the one.
Can I ask a question with regard to that? Because if we're taking money from the unassigned fund balance, how do we know that we haven't taken more money than the fund balance presently has?
Because we know what we have at the end of.
Two thousand and eighteen.
What we spent in nineteen, and we knew what we had in two thousand and nineteen, what money that we were taking now, and stuff like that. So we have a general idea of what's there, and we know we have money left over from the previous fiscal year, twenty twenty, so we have a kind of an idea of what's going to be, but we just don't know exactly.
So you haven't audited unassigned fund balance, because you have an unassigned fund balance right now.
Yes.
Of some number.
Yes, of somewhere near a hundred million dollars.
Thank you.
Do we ever use that to offset the tax rate from the new raise of the cost base?
I don't, I don't think, I don't really use that.
Because funds coming from this.
We've used a private thing, it's not, I can't, you know, I don't know.
Fire commissioners have never exercised any, what do you want to call it, love for the taxpayers. The town was like, we, in Northfield, we reduced the tax, we used a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, gave the money back to the people. I've never known a fire commissioner to do that.
But anyway.
Yeah. Could they do it?
Yeah. Well, when it says funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate, because they don't, but they could by reducing it. But anyway.
Before number seven? Article seven, land purchase. See if the district will vote and raise the appropriate sum of five thousand dollars for the purpose of purchasing a piece of land adjacent to one forty-nine Park Street in Northfield, labeled as new parcel A on plan drawn by Joseph M. Wascher, L.L.A., a land surveyor from the Hampshire Department of Transportation, who said, with said funds, that come from the unassigned fund balance, funds appropriated to this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the board of commissioners and the budget committee. Questions?
What's the size of the parcel? Why is it five thousand dollars?
What's that?
What's the acreage of, why is it five thousand dollars?
It's less than one acre, it's closer to, I think, eighteen thousand square feet, and the reason, the, the state did an assessment on the property, and that was the assessed value that they placed upon the land.
So it's like about a third of an acre.
It's the land, passed the monkey the bear signing, along Route one thirty-two there, and goes to Riddler, the workers, the website.
Alright, Article eight, fire prevention ETF. To see if the district will vote to raise an appropriate sum of ten thousand, four hundred, ninety-nine dollars for the purpose of adding to the existing fire prevention expendable trust fund, with said funds to be withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. The article is recommended by the board of commissioners and the budget committee. Majority vote required. Any questions? Article nine, the fire prevention budget. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand, eighty-five dollars for the purpose of purchasing materials, tools, and equipment related to public education, code enforcement, training, et cetera. Can you put an and in there?
You usually don't when you have a federal.
Oh, okay. Alright. With said funds to be withdrawn from the fire prevention expendable trust fund. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the board of commissioners and the budget committee, majority vote required. Okay, Article ten, health insurance deductible expendable trust fund. To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand dollars for the purpose of adding to the existing health insurance deductible expendable trust fund, with said funds to be withdrawn from the unassigned fund balance. Funds appropriated to this fund do not affect the tax rate. The article is recommended by the board of commissioners and budget committee, majority vote required. Alright, Article eleven, communications tower expendable trust fund.
Yep.
To see if the district will vote to establish a communications tower expendable trust fund per RSA thirty-one, colon, nineteen, dash, A, where fifty percent of the tower To see if the district will vote to establish a communications tower expendable trust fund per RSA 31:19-A, where 50% of the tower revenue from the previous year shall be used to offset the operating budget in the following year, and 50% of the tower revenue shall be used to offset costs for repairs, maintenance, construction costs, and bonds of fire station, radio communication, infrastructure, and to raise an appropriate $1 to put in the fund. With this amount to come from the unreserved fund balance, further to name the Board of Commissioners as agents to extend from said fund. Future funding will come from the communications tower income collected. The article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee.
Is there such a thing as an unreserved fund balance anymore, or is it unassigned fund balance?
It's the unassigned fund balance, they've changed it from unreserved to unassigned. Thank you, DRA. Would that be unreserved? Oh, yes, I did. Okay, good catch.
All righty, Article Twelve, Establish Contingency Fund. To see if the district will vote to establish a contingency fund per RSA 31:98-A and raise an appropriate $23,274 to put in the fund. This sum to come from the unassigned fund balance. Any appropriations left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse to the general fund. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and Budget Committee. Majority vote required. Article Thirteen, Pressurized Hydrants. To see if the district will vote to authorize the commissioners to enter into a five-year agreement beginning January 1st, 2021, and ending December 31st, 2025, in the amount of $629,942 for the purpose... For the purpose of providing pressurized hydrant services necessary for fire suppression and raise inappropriate the annual cost of $125,988 for this year. This agreement contains an escape clause and is a special warrant article. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and is not recommended by the Budget Committee.
Two things. The commissioners don't need the public expression to enter into contract. And... I object to the terminology, pressurized hydrant services necessary for fire suppression. One more thing, so I'm gonna make it three. This is an overall corporation of $629,000 over time that you chose to make a warrant article, yet you refuse to make the new hires a warrant article. Have to bring the answer to yourself. So why, why this gets a warrant article and a new hire's not?
The new hires were hired last year. They were...
They're coming on now.
They're starting now, correct?
And you were asked last year to do a warrant article as well, but you refused. You put another expenditure that's pre, you refused to do a warrant article for new expenditure, but you opted to have a warrant article for an expenditure that's been in the budget since whoever took it out of a warrant article status, however many years it was.
It was five years ago that it came out, Kevin, after the district approved the contract with the water district five years ago. After they approved it the first year, it went into the warrant, into the budget.
So this is a five-year contract removed. The contract is up to you. Did I understand what you say about the pressurized hydrant services? They are necessary.
Yeah, I know.
So if we have a fire next door and we do not use the pressurized hydrant service, how much water is gonna be on scene in the critical minutes?
Same amount's gonna be on the scene as you could have done with any fire.
If you are in a pressurized district where it's available, you will have hard water to continue operations.
Okay, you can use those hydrants where they have contract in mind. And we can, we should have a long time ago, we can, and we really ought to be looking into other sources of water and continually getting robbed by the water district so we can subsidize their budget. You want someone to get up at district meetings, say, we need to buy a tanker, that would be me. You want someone to get up and say, we need some cisterns, we need some more dry hydrants, that would be me. You want someone to promote the new building with another bay for the new tanker, I mean, you got it. We spent so much money on so little, so long. $600,000 over five years. Since the beginning of time, how much money we spent on water we don't use. A better alternative would be to meter the water you use and pay for what you use. And we can do that. Chief says we have enough water on wheels that, I like that, water on wheels, it's like wheels on wheels. Water on wheels that's not gonna affect our insurance. And even if it did affect our insurance, it's not gonna affect the $600,000.
But does the water district do that? Like, I know for sprinkler systems, they pay per sprinkler head. I mean, you have to pay that per sprinkler head because the water has to sit on the sprinkler. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, with sprinklers.
Yeah, so I know, like, the water district charges for each sprinkler head in a, in a building. Would they be able to do that with fire hydrants, considering you have to have so much water at the hydrant? Because they don't, they don't, they'll charge you once you use the sprinkler head, but they also charge you to have a sprinkler head.
Water, if it hasn't been available.
It's expensive. I know the library pays 400 something dollars for 50 sprinkler heads a quarter.
It started out as a per hydrant tariff, if you go way back to when it was privately owned, it was a per hydrant thing. And then it evolved into a collective system.
If you work out the numbers, if you want to call it a fire hydrant tariff, it's $300 per fire hydrant per month. That's about what it breaks down.
It's a few more, a few less pennies.
I agree, though, water district is extremely expensive. It's ridiculously expensive.
Look around and ask around. There are another five hour mistake basis, which money for what?
It's a $176 or $196,000 for pressurized hydrants.
It's managed by a company? A year?
A year.
That's from private water.
Well, you think this is, this is a private, it's a private water company?
No, it's not, it's a misvolent.
So it's managed? It's a district at home.
Only the district to vote on that.
It used to. So they've made this, there's so many better ways to spend money on water than this guy.
Is there an option to go into a shorter contract and figure out the water situation over the next two years or something?
The other, the other thing, the other thing, I don't know if, if for some reason they did shut out hydrants, it wouldn't be a lot of water. What about the ones that, there are a couple companies, I believe, that paid the owner more, who paid the owner hydrants.
Yeah, private hydrants.
There's part, yeah, but they're again, they hook them into the water system.
Yep.
So this guy over here, chief, but a fire scene, you all know he's God, right? We don't stop him, and what he says goes, we will have water. But the hot water, we're not gonna have water, it's just that, it's hot water. We'll have water, it's just a matter of hope.
If I remember correctly, the per hydrant thing went away because there were hydrants that weren't flowing properly, that's what they were done, they covered coating them. So they, there was the argument of, gee, I just cracked this one open and I'm paying, you know, 2,500 bucks for that. This one's going great, man, this one's paying 2,500 bucks for that. Oh, it's minus 10, 10 out. Oh, this one's frozen, I just opened it to fight a fire. So they got away from that per hydrant thing, because then there was some warranty implications and there was some pushback on, you know, service, so they bundled it with the word of, well, you know, if the water district wants to add hydrants, they're not gonna charge us anymore. Great, but they're not, they're not charging you any less when there's failures and freeze ups or any of that stuff. I don't, I mean, I don't, I didn't, I didn't negotiate the contract, so I don't know what your, what your warranty, you know, what you guys got for warranty and that stuff. Looks like your point, I mean, look, we don't know, what was their sales pitch to you? I mean, what is their justification of the price tag?
Justification? I think they recharge us a certain amount. This is what it was five years ago, so the price was the same for a year as it was with the contract before our time, before my time. Some of the discussions of this has been the water quality and the training water, that's been some heated points. The water district said, has said, we're gonna shut the water off. These are concerns more to the water district, some of these, because, yes, by RSA, the chief can take, the emergency scene commander can tap into the water supply. If they shut the hydrants off completely, now you come into a liability issue that you just tagged the hydrant, you flow the water, you stretch the hose that hydrant, and it's gonna shut off the main. That becomes a significant liability that someone is going to have to explain to the insurance and things like that. But those are other concerns. This was essentially the same contract rate that we had five years ago. They didn't up it at all. We're pushing back a little bit because they don't want us using Park Street Hydrant for training, because it cloudies the system, because it just turns it, it turns it up, as we all know, so they have to flush the system every time they use the hydrant. However, one of the things we pushed back is if they're training out here, they need realistic training situation. They need a pressurized hydrant, or an option we put to them is a pressurized cistern, which will allow that realistic training for tying in, because if the firefighters aren't training with a hydrant, and then they have to hook it up under emergency, things can go wrong. They don't dress it properly, they don't set it up for full flow. So that's, some of the contract negotiations are still going there.
The hydrants have the one important lesson training on it, has way more psi damage to the equipment than with this one.
So the answer to your first question is, John, your impression is, is that when the water company was a privately owned entity, they were regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, so there was a schedule of rates and tariffs that they could and couldn't charge, and so it was kind of locked into a roof there. Then when the water district was gone and blocked, the water company, Mr. Misses Martin, they, with a stroke of pen, voted to adopt those tariffs, and they kind of said, we'll, we'll take that on. And you probably have a factor to spend a ton of money to a consulting account, to a rate study, they recommended it, guess what, they recommended that they won't pay that money, so they, they're rating free sign, sprinklers, customer drivers, perfume required, so...
Well, I was thinking, yeah, I think that they would know what their meaning costs would be, so there's this arbitrary number, like, you know, they cost X amount of dollars to maintain a hydrant, paint it, it just doesn't seem like they're organized enough to have those type of figures, is kind of what I've been gathering. So this, it just, to me, this seems like just a number that they threw in the dark for in total work, but there's no real justification on their end, uh, this is what it costs us to provide this service to you. You know, and I agree, I think tank for the water per gallon would be a better use of it too. I just look for more data from them before, you know, and I just haven't heard from them yet, so...
At one point, they made the argument that the upgrades they did were more than they had to do because of the need for fire suppression, so they spent more on upgrades than they needed. Yeah, so instead of putting six and five hundred yards, they put eight at the pound, that cost them a lot.
And then that drove the tariff.
So the cost, their real additional cost is the pipe.
Yeah.
The diameter of the pipe.
Like the hole from the trench.
The trench's the same trench, so... From my estimation, they put some pretty bogus cap or justification for, I mean, at one point, fire hydrant figures, 10% of our budget and 10% of their budget. We are attached kind of to the water.
And I guess the question to the water district is, is when they do these tariffs, they get scheduled, at what point is it, the exit 20 thing, the first person that looks like it, pay, then anybody else looks on, hits the charge? Which is why Tilton backed out of doing the fire station business quite a while, because the cost of water isn't gonna be here with it, because the town would have to pay back through this fund, this scheme of ownership of the system and, you know, so there's, there's like a 20-year schedule on that. So the question needs to kind of go back and say, at what point is that tariff lapse because is the project paid off, you know, is the pipeline around, you know, is the upgrade, you know, those are the, speaking their language.
I think, I think for when they do that, it's 20-year, it drops the bill down.
Yeah, so it's, so the person that shows up and builds at exit 20 in year 22 is owing anybody anything because the project should have been on.
They have a connection for you, but they don't.
Yeah.
It says that the agreement contains an escape clause. What is the escape clause?
So if the townspeople do not vote to approve it, we are not locked into the funds, we don't, the townspeople are the, the publics vote in support of this warrant article. So we are not signing a contract for 100 and, well, for 629 for five years, if the townspeople say, no, we're not gonna do it, that's, they don't say, oh, you signed it, so you're paying us in year two anyways. So if townspeople do not approve that portion of it...
So have you signed a contract for this year already?
No.
The, the present contract expires?
Coming up.
It already expires.
No.
It already expires. December.
December 34th.
So we have no contract?
We have none.
So you can't use their water if you're private. Or are you gonna use your water, are you gonna use their water if you're private?
I mean, they haven't shut the hydrant off at the main, as far as I know. If they do, they have to tag, bag the fire hydrant, lock it as unusable.
You can imagine that, that's what people who are thinking of moving into the town.
But if you don't pay your water bill, maybe they'll check it up.
A lot of towns don't have pressure reasons.
The whole impression is we're going to weather it.
No, no, they're from the pump that's on 140. Which I'm, which now you say that, I'm guessing those are the hydrants that they want to use the hydrant right there?
Yeah.
165, 45.
That's awesome.
Did we answer your question, though, Paul?
Yes, thank you.
I have a question. The escape clause. So is it written in such a way that if the voters come back next year and say you want out of the contract?
Well, is it tied to annual funding, right? I don't have the ground, that was your question. That's how I would make it look.
Because you're asking for authorization to go into a five-year agreement when you say this is an escape clause.
Are they gonna be on the, every year for the next five years, if that being that?
The way it's ordered, it would ask you.
Well, then the next question would be, why are you raising appropriate?
It's on number two.
A whole nine year.
Thank you. At the bottom of it?
Yes.
All right, so... In the event that any appropriation required by the fire district to meet its financial obligation under this agreement is not a per year... obligation under this agreement is not approved at the annual or any special meeting of the fire district, this contract shall conclude forthwith with no further rights or responsibilities available to either party, except as those that may be negotiated through a further agreement. So, if the town, if the public votes no, that ceases the contract at that point. So, we're not obligated to pay year three if the townspeople vote no, we have to go into negotiation with them. But it can step out of contract, and I was going to say you have to pay three, four, and five, though.
That's why you're only raising appropriations.
So, is it going to be, is this going to be a warrant article every year once we're in the contract, or is it just a warrant article if it's a contract or middle of the year?
I think it's a contract.
It'll have to be per year because the only reason for appropriate, 125,988 dollars.
Wouldn't the 125 just end up going in the budget line item?
Well, that's the thing, that's what we use. That's what we do. Not the used in the last five years, but the used in the last.
I mean, the, the, the year, and then it's time, and it's, and that's why it's a warrant article.
So, the, so the instrument of the contract is just to lock in price.
That's lock in the price.
Because we had price population.
Yeah, I believe that's all about lock in the price.
Given the fact that you don't need permission from anyone to enter a contract, if this fails, when this fails, are you going to sign a contract anyway?
No, we're going to pull a punch on it.
I'm sorry?
We won't, we won't have to punch the bullet.
Put back in the letter, like you did before. My question is, are you going to, are you going to honor and follow what the people say relative to that article? So, if this fails, there will be no hydrant, there will be no money from hydrants. Are you going to stand by that, or are you going to find money somewhere else for your hydrants?
Who wants to go into contract and public, in my one personal opinion, I think we've got to go back to public hearings, special meetings, and things like that, if it's voluntary, it's a duplicate, depending on what the public says. That's how I approach it.
If it fails, there's no contract.
Because it says so right in the.
If the contract was only to sign, and there's a lot of companies that sign, that would be a contract, so I'm agreeing with this.
If this article fails, someone could go at Article 17 and put that money back in from that line up for the one year.
No, you can't. You can make a amendment to the bottom line, you can dictate how it's spent.
Right.
So, what I think we got to do is find some money somewhere and do some research. How much money we've spent, what the value has been for the district, and other ways to figure that out, is continuing with me, 125 grand for pressurized hydrants.
Let me ask this question, what's the, how long will it take to get a tanker?
Yes.
They think that's another tanker.
Firstly, I would recommend buying another tanker. I would recommend doing other things, but my sister, we don't have the personnel.
Can you?
We don't have enough personnel to drive almost anything we have now. So, adding another vehicle just because of the water, that doesn't mean it's going to get the fire.
Where you can put it.
Is it possible to?
And we don't have any place to put it currently either.
Is it possible to shorten the period to one, two, three years so that we can plan where the sisters are going to go, and the plan of the sisters?
This is an agreement between the Board of Fire Commissioners and the Board and the Board of Water Commissioners. You guys can decide whatever you want.
And it sounds like in that agreement, you guys could opt out in two years and just not get it approved at town meeting to fund that money.
Yeah, I wouldn't short the contract with that.
Because that may, that may raise the bottom price. So, if you got it through.
You could sign a 10-year contract and lock in the price, you know?
If you got it through this year, you could take this year and research it and figure out another option, if you get it through this year.
You could amend this, the contract on what we, the lawyer gave it to one year and just figure out what you meant to do after that, for which, you know?
Even a five-year would be very, too unfunded for the district.
That's true.
I don't think that would be good.
No.
That's one of the reasons why we want to make sure there was an opt-out rather than you lock in for the five-year. The last, you saw it on, on, on.
Yeah.
It was very one-sided, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, so Article 14, apparatus and equipment fund down, uh, fund budget, so I'm sorry. The safety district will vote to raise and appropriate 129,185 dollars for the purpose of purchasing fire, rescue, EMS equipment, and ambulance charges, with said funds to be withdrawn from the apparatus and equipment special revenue fund established under RSA 31:95-C, adopted March 7th of 2005. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee.
Is there a free download of that document, if you can pull?
Yes, I have it. It's, uh, so there's like money in there for safety equipment, traffic vests, some tools, uh, phones on the street, SCBA masks, uh, turnout gear, flashlights, hose, um, CO meters, pagers, some dry suits, some rope, and EMS disposal.
Thank you. And that's been, that's been scrutinized by the Budget Committee.
We brought the cool game.
It's, it's not, it wasn't, it wasn't the big SCBA year that we ever did, like they just did to put on masks and the new, new badge, yeah?
Article 15, new fire engine. Safety district will vote, will vote to raise and appropriate the sum 720,000 dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new fire engine and equipment with said funds to be withdrawn from the apparatus and equipment special revenue fund established under RSA 31:95-C, adopted March 7th, 2005. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee.
What's the balance in the equipment number, actually?
Currently, I, is it just over 100,000 right now? It'd be more than that, I'd have to, someone got it.
What does the manufacturer, will make the price match what they did to us?
So, they, they made the back truck add a price increase last September, and we got the previous truck just before the price went up. And so, this truck reflects the cost of that truck plus the price increase. But I expect we'll do better than 720 because we got trade on this, but to negotiate the value of the trade, it's not going to be a lot.
Right.
So, when this was, I don't know if I should say originally printed, or when we were first presented documentation for the Budget Committee, where it showed the engine and ambulance, one was marked choice one and one was marked choice two. That's correct. When did they both become choice one and one?
No, if, the reason, the reason for that was, there was really three things that I wished to purchase this year vehicle-wise, an engine, an ambulance, and a new deputy's vehicle. I was able to better justify an engine and an ambulance and save the deputy's vehicle for next year, probably. But if, if the voters decided that they only wanted the first one thing or the other, it is the recommendation of the fire commissioners that we purchase an engine rather than an ambulance.
Even though you use the ambulance when?
The ambulance isn't doing as much repair as what we're sucking into these engines.
So, you haven't, okay, that being the case, why is there an ambulance on this front as well?
Because the ambulance does need it, but we could probably speak another year at the ambulance if we had to.
Okay. That being the case, when you're having knowledge of that, why isn't that what you're doing?
Because it's cheaper to buy a new ambulance now under contract because the prices are going to go up, and we still have to maintain the ambulance, which is getting to be pretty expensive. That's money that, that maintenance fees comes out of, out of the tax side because we don't, uh, use maintenance out of the apparatus equipment contract, so the tax side is probably operating money. So, it's cheaper to, if you wait till next year, it's going to be two years of maintenance fees on this ambulance. So, we're actually, it's actually cheaper to buy it now because it'd be cheaper to, we don't have to pay the increases in the ambulance cost, and we don't have to pay the maintenance fees. And, and so that's why it's cheaper to buy it now than to say, uh, stay for a year or two years from now.
That commission about anything you didn't do.
But this is why it goes to the public to decide if, that's why it's in there as an article rather than let's give the public the option to speak their mind and vote how they feel.
And it's still takes a year to get it.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to, the way we do it, it does.
If you want, with a cooking cutter, you could probably get it a lot shorter. Yes, I know where you're going with that.
You hear me too.
No, I don't, I don't think you, if you, you'd only get a used one by next week. You wouldn't get something that's going to last you seven, nine, or eight, nine, 10 years. A used one, you probably get two or three years. I think that's almost over, he did that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that I use. If you buy the regular one, I'll build, sitting in Hoxville, Wisconsin right now, go by it and drive it.
What's that one on?
I'm sorry?
What's that one costing?
What's it cost? Two hundred and twenty feet?
That one's flat.
Thirty, something like that. But actually, I just realized, that's the next, I spoke out of turn or something. We're on, we're on the menu, and I flipped us.
Upset.
Article 16, the new ambulance. The safety district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of 208, is there a Y supposed to be there?
Yeah, that's a Y.
Yeah, that's supposed to be a Y there. Eighty-five dollars for the purpose of purchasing a new ambulance and equipment, with said funds to be withdrawn from the apparatus and equipment special revenue established under RSA 31:95-C, adopted March 7th, 2005. Funds appropriated from this fund do not affect the tax rate. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee. Majority vote for part.
Why don't I make this suggestion, that after these four articles get rewritten, that they be, um, reviewed and checked for typos and for accuracy, because there's nothing that throws mud in any worse than having inconsistencies in the text or the language of the warrant articles. All it does is add, if you.
The safety district will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended sum of 205, I'm sorry, 2,589,216 dollars for the general and municipal operations. This article does not include appropriations contained in special and or individual articles addressed separately. This article is recommended by the Board of Commissioners and the Budget Committee. Majority vote for part.
So, this is, the 25,000, and either of those numbers match with that decelerating?
Yeah, page, uh, uh, page five.
Page five.
Page five.
So, page.
Page five.
Can it include four articles in one?
Yes.
Page five.
And the Budget Committee one, accounts for the 650 versus 60,000 or 6,000 for the open fund that was adjusted in the year, right?
Right, that is in there.
So, the commissioners have reviewed the Budget Committee's proposals and approved that number, formally approved that number? The Budget Committee?
Yes.
The commissioners review the Budget Committee's numbers and formally accept them?
They did it their last meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
What is definitely, the commissioners' budget prediction?
105,000.
No, I totally understand what this says, that the commissioners recommend, and the Budget Committee recommends, I wanted to verify that the commissioners were in line with that number from the Budget Committee. Because it's different than the commissioners' report.
Right.
You just got Article.
Budget Committee's 105,000?
Less.
Yes, there.
Yeah, 105,000.
Yes. It's right here on page five.
Yeah.
That's on the premise that there's grant money coming against that number, right? So, that's not, it's not two and a half million taxes, it's.
Right, you don't have offsetting revenue.
Yeah.
But, but.
But they're still raising the appropriate.
Right, but I'm saying, not our tax rate, our tax is not being set on 2589.
No, it is not. What happens in September is, um, a revised estimate, a revised revenue goes to DRA and then they take and set the tax rate after they subtract, subtract that revenue from the voted appropriations.
Your revenue's on page nine.
Yes.
So, I get it, you got to land that message in the meeting, otherwise, you know how it goes.
I know. And then on page 10, it summarizes everything. You know, the operating budget, just warrant articles, um, less estimated revenues and credits.
We got a million and a half in special fire.
That includes the ambulance and the fire truck and the apparatus and equipment fund budget.
What do you anticipate will be in the apparatus and equipment fund for raising and appropriating the money at town meeting?
What, what's the revenue?
Well, you've got over a million dollars for the raise and appropriating. It was half a million a few months ago. You said it was almost eight now? So do you expect to be over a million?
Well, yeah, this, this, um, this year will project for money, for this fee revenue. It'll probably come, uh, any year.
By March?
Not by March. By three hundred fifty a year, but looking forward. Could be, this is not money in yet for what we needed to be. We're not going to be spending on the.
So you're raising appropriate, meaning that, anticipating that revenue?
We've got, yeah, we mustn't stop providing ambulance, but we're going to have it. We've collected a couple fifty thousand dollars last month.
I was just curious because I don't know.
We should generate, uh, somewhere, you know, four hundred seventy-five thousand a year. Year with, because last year was like four five, year with around four, one, four, eight.
At this point, I think we close the public hearing on the, uh, the ledger.
Did you ask the question?
Are they doing individual votes or on the warrant article?
I thought we already voted on the warrant articles each grouping.
Is that, oh, okay. Usually it's kind of called a hearing, but.
Oh.
That's a lot.
They can still.
Yeah, they could read, because you correct. You did as well?
Budget Committee's got to vote on that final number.
Huh?
Budget Committee's got to vote on the final number.
Uh-huh. Tonight?
Yes.
Tonight.
Yes.
The same as, uh, commissioners. And you guys all wrote in here, recommended by Budget Committee and condition as.
With the exception of thirteen.
Yes, but, um... They'll do a vote during public hearing.
Can we do a mass vote?
Yeah, you can.
So is the commissioner, like, to make a motion to accept Articles one through fifteen with adjustments as identified?
One through, ones through seventeen.
Sounds like, ones through eighteen?
Eighteen, yeah.
With identified adjustments?
Yes.
Three, four, through fifteen? One through three, one through four?
One, yeah.
One through four is just voting?
Right, but changes were made.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Corrected.
So I'll make that as a motion then.
Okay, okay.
Okay, the motion's been moved.
Okay.
Can I say that? I was a member.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
No, cancel it.
How old are you, James?
Thirty-five years.
Right. Well, the Budget Committee. It's for, no, it's the bottom.
We didn't amend that, exactly.
No, it's the bottom line of the budget.
They have to amend the budget?
Yeah, they have to do the budget.
I thought they already did it.
That should be done here.
It has to be done here as well. I couldn't finalize anything until after tonight.
Uh, okay, I'm sorry, that's in the way.
It's all right.
It's in here, right?
Mm-hmm.
Page five, what are the operating budget?
Yeah.
Another motion to two million five hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars as the final Budget Committee. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
All of them, yes.
It's gone, yeah. Right now, it's a little over, no.
Challenge, yes. Warrant article, sorry.
Warrant, Mary.
Challenge?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
The voting goes, uh, to the Budget?
Yes.
The vote, yeah.
Oh, I thought we were just due for Eric.
Yeah, you're ready.
Yeah.
Ready.
Make a motion to adjourn the Budget Committee meeting.
Is that a twenty?
I'll flip the net.
Roll call vote, please.
All of them, yes.
All I got. Oh, I want to stay.
Please just stay.
Yeah.
Sharon?
Eric, yeah.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Dawson, yes.
Was it their meeting?
It was fault, so you, you need to adjourn as well.
I think I want to mark it more.
Oh, wait a minute. You're not done.
Oh, I guess I just want to.
Okay.
So it's, it does, that, well, you're in the contract, but we have, uh, policy procedures, personal, both policies, C B A, you know, if I want to carry that, it's.
Hey, Charlie, you want to hang out? What do you want to?
You ready, you ready?
No, that's two and a half years.
Roll call, please.
See you here.
Roll call, please.
Bye.
It's in the personal policy, and you're, I think I have to exact.
I don't know. I have no idea.
I'll keep that, I'll timeout and read the policy before I sign it. Uh, just, I don't know about you, I mean, just so that.
Yeah, it's basically, um, it just says that.
Yep.
When the people of the commissioners file.
Yep. So if you email it to us, to me, I'd easily, I'd sign it and allow it to.
I'd like to.
I don't know, if you could email it to us and I can get our feedback to you and send it out at that point. That's how I would make a motion if we had to do most of it. Yeah, I would like to just see the bottom of my policy on that thing.
Love it.
Yeah.
People with that, with that article?
Well, who was that?
I'm not expecting time.
Who was that?
It's rolling over.
Well, if you're getting anything.
Bye, Charlie.
Bye.
You can pick this up and down, mate.
What's that? You're dressed it?
Make a motion?
Yep.
Okay, then you accept, how was the paper?
So, yes.
All right.